Could I also remind you to speak directly into the microphone and make sure your card is pushed firmly into the console. Members of the public, I'd like to say that as a committee we understand that the matters under consideration tonight can be emotive, however please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and the committee and refrain from any booing, cheering or any other form of disturbance. So now we move on to the main items of business. The minutes of the meeting which took place on the 8th of February 2017 have been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of the meeting? Thank you very much. Emma, have there been any apologies for absence?
Yes, we have apologies for absence from councillor Simon Thornton, thank you.
Thank you. Have members declared any interest before the meeting?
Yes, we have one from yourself, a pecuniary interest on item B2 because you're the agent for the application.
Okay. Do members have any other non-pecuniary or disclosable pecuniary interests to declare? Jolly good. Emma, have there been any questions received from members of the public?
None, my sins.
Peter, are there any updates to government guidance or legislation that the committee should be made aware of?
Thank you Chairman, I have no updates for committee today, thank you.
Okay, just to advise you that in the event of site inspections becoming necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday the 3rd of April 2017 at a time to be agreed. Now to move on to the planning applications, the first item is item A1 WA 2016/2215, erection of agricultural buildings at Rockwood Hazelmead Road, Whitely, GU85PU. Richard, would you like to introduce the application to the committee please?
Thank you Chairman, as we know we're dealing with the Rockwood agricultural application for the erection of agricultural buildings, as you see there, and that will serve a suckler cow farm. I would just like to make one clarification regarding the number of objections, as per the update sheet, you'll note that it said 344 I think objections have been received, it was actually 355, a slight error was made. We'll note that most of the, or nearly all of the objections were received to the original scheme and today the application being discussed here is the amended scheme, which many of you, or all of you should have seen in the report. I'd also like to make a clarification on the proposed number of cows that the unit will serve. It's stated on page 7 of the agenda report, I wrote that 250 cows are proposed. Today, it's actually been clarified that 150 cows are in fact proposed, and that's been clarified by the council's agricultural consultant and the applicant consultant as well in their justification statement, and you'll see the date of the statement on the screen there. And it's also noted in other responses we've had as well. The agricultural consultant that the council has hired, note that the 150 cows is slightly movable because obviously they're going, the 150 cows are adult cows that will be brought to the site for the purpose of breeding. And our consultant, the council's consultant, has let us know that over three years they expect 55 replacement cows within the first three years to be brought to the site for those heifers and those other cows that may no longer be serviceable. And also in their statement they mentioned 70 finishing cattle, they're some of the ones that will be born, the sort of younger cattle that will be born that will remain on site, and that will be within three years, so they'll be aged between one and three years. So it is a movable feast but it shouldn't vary too much in this instance. And we'll move on to the next slide. Here you have the site, you'll see the site in red with any other land that the applicant owns in blue or has an interest in, is in blue the ownership boundaries. This site is approximately 72.289 hectares and is located to the north of the village of Brook. The application site lies in a position which is enclosed by a woodland belt to the north, it's along here, woodland belt to the north and to the east here, and there's some even to the south. And the application has a number of planting screens to the north and to the east here, where you can see the arrow there. And here you can see a number, where the arrow is, you can see a number of tracks that are also on site, one of those is a footpath, number 130 I believe, as stated in the agenda report, and there are other such tracks that are already there. We'll move on, and you'll see an aerial photograph of the site, so I'll just describe a few more things. The tree cover I mentioned before can be clearly seen next to where that red box is and the arrow showing where the proposed site's going to be, so it's clearly, you can see it's clearly screened. You can also see the other woodland to the north and other trees to the south, and you'll notice, you can see a number of address points that come up on here, so they're the nearest, they're all the properties and farms that are close to the actual site. So as I've said, the site itself includes the whole field where the cows will be, but that red square is literally where the buildings are going to be, give or take, so it should be there. So, and obviously I forgot to mention the Hazelmead Road runs down the western side of the site, there as we see there. So you'll see the site photos here, there's four photos and you'll see the arrows relating to those photos telling you what direction they've been taken in, you'll see the red arrow showing where the proposed building is in that outline, so that is the actual proposed sighting of the buildings. Photograph A, which you'll see has the case officer's shadow in there, that is facing toward the development, and there you'll see the tree screening both to the north and to the west, and some to the, even to the east. And photo B there is showing more of the development site, just at an angle, you can see there the trees to the north and to the west that will be screening the development. Photograph C is facing towards the Hazelmead Road boundary, now where my, where the cursor has been placed, if you can see that there, there is a hole in the tree line there which has been cut out to represent where the access is going, for access out onto the Hazelmead Road. That access will be explained further on in this presentation, so I won't go into too much detail now. And then photo D is just more tree cover present on site. And if everyone's happy we'll move on slightly. Here you'll see the block plan of the site, first I'll make you aware, as this is the clearest indication of it, you can see where the proposed new access is going to be onto the Hazelmead Road in relation to the barns. You'll see there where my cursor is, it indicates another building which is a dwelling house, but that is subject to another application and is not up for discussion under this application. You'll see, we'll start with the two largest buildings, oh, two large buildings to the rear of the site, they are the cattle sheds, and then you have a little building to the west of the site, which is an ancillary cattle handling building, and then you have this L-shaped building which is for machine storage of the machines they already have, which they store out in the open, they'd like to store in this building along with some feed in that building. And you'll see where those two open squares are, or rectangles are, is where the silage will go that they will produce on site. So that's the site, and you can see some tracks and other roads that they're proposing, this is key, they're proposing a new track to the east of the site which will be introduced to the site for, mainly for slow-moving traffic within the site rather than large vehicles, all large vehicles will use the access shown in that red square there. We'll move on. You can see the proposed new access here, this is information that was provided by the applicant consultant, transport consultant to the council, and it was passed on to the Surrey County Council Highways team, and I'll just brief you on that. The, through discussions with the agent and, sorry, county council, they've agreed on this location out onto the Hazelmead Road. So as far as planning officers are concerned, it is an acceptable location to have an access as the county council have deemed it, have actually deemed it far greater visibility displays than are actually required onto that road, and they have, as you'll see in the report, they've given their comments and they feel it's the most suitable access onto this road. There are two, not shown here, but there are two accesses, existing accesses to the site, and through discussion it was deemed, with the county council highways team, it was deemed that those were not suitable in this case, so this final access was deemed appropriate in this case. So we'll move on, you can see here, I've shown, decided to show, you can see that dotted line shows the outline of the proposed farm buildings, cow farm buildings, and you'll see that the nearest building to the north is 268 metres away, and I believe it to be Heath House. I do apologise, you'll see Heath House at the bottom there, but there is another building there which I don't, I'm not sure if it is Heath House or not, but it's another house there which many members would have spotted when they were on site, that is about approximately 500 metres away, so you can see that the nearest properties are a fair distance away. The one that's fairly close at 268 metres is behind tree cover, and some members will remember that there was a gap in that tree cover, they will have views, but as we've seen on the aerial photograph, there is tree cover to the north and to the east of the proposed buildings which will screen, which we feel will screen those buildings from those properties. We see here some sections, so the next few slides are going to be sections through the site. You can see the red line on that, a sort of block plan there which is indicating the direction that the section is showing, and this section, if you bear with me, this section is showing toward the Hazelmead Road, and it does show again a dwelling house, but that dwelling house is a matter of another application, and you'll see the L-shaped building and one of the elevations of the cow sheds to the rear. So, and it shows that the buildings are actually cut into the land, so they lie lower than where the, where this building, which again is subject to another application and should not be discussed here, they're set lower than that, so they will be cut into the ground, and you will notice these trees shown here, which are the, are actually higher than the ridgeline of the proposed buildings. So we'll move on, and you'll see another section through the site indicated by the red line, and that's showing northward, and the main element you see here, again, is that house which is shown here, again, subject to assessment under another application. And you'll note in this section that, again, all buildings would be lower than the tree, tops of the trees, the crowns of the trees, but also you don't see in this one any of the farm buildings, so because it's, would be set into the ground, that minimises a lot of the visual impact that may have otherwise occurred of those buildings. And you'll see the final site section is indicated by that red line, and that just shows sort of more central to the site, and it shows the two cow sheds and the ancillary cow sheds, again, set much lower than the tree line, the tops of the trees, and the trees shown there I believe are the ones by the side of the Hazelmead Road, so it does give you some idea of the tree cover available already. We'll move forward again, and you'll see the proposed elevations of the buildings. These builds, this is the machine store, so this is the L-shaped building previously shown on the block plan, and that's where they'll put the feed, the silage clamps, so that is where they'll store the sort of grain and things to feed the cows, cows from. As you see there where the arrow is, those areas, the grain storage are slightly open but there are walls to stop any grains or any feed or fodder being blown away. Where the arrow is here, you'll see that there is, if you haven't already spotted, there is a wall proposed there, that is not, I don't think that's against the Hazelmead Road, I don't think, but that is to protect the land as they dig in, they'll need to have retaining walls and suchlike to stop the earth collapsing, and it does include a 1.8 metre high fence on top of that wall just to keep everything contained, and that will further screen the site, and officers do not feel that to be a visual, have any significant visual impact in itself. So that's that building, we'll move on, and you'll see the other elevations of the proposed cow barn, pretty standard cow shed design, made of, you know, metals and brickwork, pretty standard, nothing special there, and that's to keep the cows, you know, safe and warm in wintertime, and they'll be grazed during the summer months. So there's two, I believe there's two of those cattle sheds to the north of the site, fairly large buildings, but as they're set into the ground, as was shown by the site sections, you don't really see much of those at all. And then one of the final buildings is this ancillary cattle handling shed that was set to the side of those two bigger buildings, which is much smaller, much more utilitarian than the last two buildings, again, standard building just for bringing cattle in as and when they need to, so it's a fairly standard building, again, set into the ground. And finally, we'll see here the determining issues, most of the issues raised here are matters of principle and technical opinion, as you'll see there. The two key areas that we feel are matters of judgment are the impact upon the visual amenity, so in this case the AONB and the AGLV, so the area of outstanding natural beauty, and the area of great landscape value which the site falls into, and of course the impact on the residential amenity of neighbouring properties which you saw on the aerial photograph. Thank you very much, I hope that's provided you with all the information you need, and I pass over to the chairman.
Thank you Richard, very thorough presentation, thank you very much. This is a public speaking item and I understand that the procedure has been explained to those who wish to speak, so may I first invite the objector Nicola Hibbert to speak please. Good evening, Miss Hibbert, you have four minutes from when you begin to speak.
Good evening, my name is Nicola Hibbert, I'm a resident of Whitely, I live at First Hurst, which is one of the properties that will be, the farm will be visible from my property. I'd like to object to the development plans for the farm. You've already heard the numerous objections raised by the community concerning the plans, concerning highway safety, the access point being on a 50 mile an hour road, there'll be very fast-moving traffic with slow-moving goods lorries, and there are, there already have been fatalities on that road. There are concerns about animal welfare and air and water pollution, concerns about the size and character of the building, and that's, so for example, the tree screening in the aerial plans is a lot thinner than is represented on the plans that you just saw, because they're from 2015 and recently there have been tree thinning works carried My main point, the development site is within the green belt, and it's also within an area of outstanding natural beauty. The one and the two are not the same. I'm concerned that the planning committee, sorry, the, well, the planning committee hasn't paid enough regard to the fact that areas of outstanding natural beauty have a higher importance and are afforded a higher priority than just areas within the green belt. So the policy RD10 of the local plan, is this development necessary for the purposes of agriculture? Is it a sustainable development? It's a red herring, because the necessary, the relevant test comes from policy C3, which states that areas of outstanding natural beauty are of national importance. The primary aim of designation is to conserve and enhance their natural beauty, development inconsistent with this primary aim will not be permitted unless there is a proven public interest. And I don't believe that a farm is in the public interest. The relevant sections of the MPPF are sections 115 and 116, and they state that great weight should be taken, should be given to conserving the landscape and scenic beauty in areas of outstanding national, natural beauty, which have the highest status of protection in relation to the landscape, and 116 which states that planning permissions should be refused for major developments in these designated areas except in exceptional circumstances and where it can be demonstrated that they are in the public interest. So I don't believe that the presumption in favour of sustainable development applies in this case because the protections afforded by the designation of AONB are greater than those of just the green belt, and having read through all the planning documents, I don't believe that the planning officer has given due care and attention to this. Fact, sorry. Oh, oh, so there's guidance from the National Trust, has, the National Trust has written guidance documents calling for planning departments to pay more attention to the fact that areas of outstanding natural beauty are afforded a higher level of protection than green belt, than green belt land, sorry. Okay, thank you, that was awful.
Thank you very much. I understand that we were expecting a representative of the parish council who hasn't arrived yet, so may I invite Janet Long, Matt Howard, Tom Warren and Tim Potter to speak for the application, and they will divide the four minutes between them. Okay, you have four minutes from when you start speaking, thank you.
Good evening councillors, we're here to speak in support of the application and to address the key concerns which have been raised by neighbours and yourselves during the site visit. In short, the application being for an agricultural use is an appropriate form of development in the green belt, and the design has been altered to minimise visual impact on the AONB. It's been significantly altered since the original submission and now has the support of the council's agricultural consultant, your officers and importantly Surrey Highways. To explain the specific issues, I hand over to Tom Warren, our agricultural consultant.
Good evening councillors, the proposal before the council offers a great opportunity for the Rockwood Park Estate to reintroduce native breeds of cattle back onto the land. The farming system proposed is a non-intensive pasture-based farming system designed to best utilise all the available pasture at the estate. Cattle here, as with any other pasture-based system in the UK, will be winter housed generally between November and May, depending on how much grass they've got. The rest of the year they're free to roam and graze on the pasture of the estate. There are not only intensively reared cattle in a shed all year round as per most of the objections in the first application. The other point was slurry, there is going to be no slurry on this farm at all, slurry is associated with dairy farms, not with suckler farms, slurry is produced not here. So therefore there's no inconsistencies in my report that was noted, it's a straw-based system proposed, the only time that the cattle will be on straw is between November and May, the rest of the time they're outdoors, free to roam on the grass. This presents less odor and no slurry to present smells. All intensive, sorry, not intensive, we're not intensive. All livestock farms have an underground runoff or effluent pit to collect any nitrates to prevent them running into watercourses. This is quite standard on all farms, but this is not a slurry pit, there is no mixed-up cow manure going anywhere, it's all absorbed by the straw. In May, when all the cattle are turned out to grass, a digger comes in, clamps the manure, puts it on a concrete slab to prevent it burning the grass, and then it gets spread onto the maize crop in order to grow the crops.
Good evening, I am Matt Howe, the business consultant commissioned by the applicant to look at the proposed agricultural business and budget the financial forecast figures. You cannot judge this application by what has happened on this land in the past, as the proposed agricultural business creates a vertically integrated supply chain that adds value to the produce and insulates the business from the vagaries of the beef commodity market. The application and the business plan were praised on behalf of the council by an independent agricultural expert from Reading Agricultural Consultants. He analysed the business figures that accompanied the application. Within his report, he does not question any of the financial figures or assumptions used, therefore he agrees with the proposed business plan and its feasibility. If he had any doubts about the validity of the proposed business development or the financial projections or the physical assumptions, then he would have had no hesitation to bring this to the attention of the council. The fact that he did not confirms that the business case is sound and has every chance of being achieved. The business plan is based on 150 breeding cows, and allowing for the annual cycle of calving and sale of young stock, there would be a maximum of 300 cattle at any one time. Thank you.
So I'm here as the veterinary surgeon that's been advising the project, and in answer to the concerns about animal welfare, the proposed numbers, so 150 animals on the building side is appropriate to offer these animals the best possible welfare standards and aids fitting with extensive management, and is fitting for them in terms of the management of these animals providing shelter during the winter period when, when required.
Thank you very much. Members, I open it up to you, councillor Holder.
Thank you Chairman, I am the award member for Whitely, and in view of the fact that 355 people have objected to this, I feel that I had to bring it to the committee. I'm not objecting to this application, but what I am saying is that that application that you see up there is for 250 suckler cows, which was the original application. I pointed out to the officers that in fact the application is now for 150 suckler cows, and suckler cows carve out of doors. So what I'm requesting is that perhaps this application be deferred, because the amount of cow sheds should be half the number that are shown on there, and by reducing them to half and bringing the cow sheds slightly further down, you can cut that site into half. That site is occupying nearly 20 acres of area of great landscape value and AONB, and if we can halve it and make it a viable proposition, I have no objection to this application whatsoever. The only other point I would make is that on the, on the page, on page six, the access to the Hazelmead Road is shown below the farm, and at that point there is no, there's no hint of any problem because you can see both up and down the road. The access we were shown on the site visit is way up this side of the farm, two completely different accesses, and I'm just worried that the Surrey Highways looked at the wrong application and I'd like that clarified. But apart from that, I'd like to defer the application so that perhaps we can look at a smaller thing with 150 cows and not 250.
Right, is that a proposition, and do you have a second there?
That is a proposition, yeah.
Okay, so members, the proposition is that we defer this for further consultation, all those, yes councillor Martin?
Please have a comment from the officers before we actually go to a vote.
Certainly, yes.
On the facts or otherwise that Nick has presented.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Chairman, just from our point of view, on terms of the deferral, we have had Reading Agricultural Consultants who are, we often use as our retained agricultural consultants, they have confirmed that the scale and size of the buildings are appropriate for the enterprise proposed, for the number of cows also. So we've gone through the process, we've sought expert views particularly on the size of the buildings and whether it's appropriate, and that's a key test for us to understand what's been proposed, is acceptable. So we do need to take account of what their advice is, their advice to us, to the committee and to officers is that they're acceptable and we should take that advice. They're, by deferring this, their advice is not going to change, that is their advice for us to consider, the scale of development is acceptable. The scale of development is acceptable, that's the point to take. Chairman, I think our solicitor would like to make a comment just on the resolution.
Through you chair, just to correct, I'm not actually a solicitor, I can't purport to be a solicitor as an offence, I'm actually a barrister albeit non-practicing. Essentially councillor, you've got a motion on the table here and that is to whether or not to defer. So actually, if you express an opinion or view now for or against, you could be prejudiced on yourselves if it comes back. The motion's there, you need to decide whether or not the motion should go forward or should drop. So if you're minded to actually talk about this application now because that motion is tabled, you could be prejudiced in yourself when it comes back.
Okay, councillor Martin, Tom Martin?
I would like to speak directly to the proposition to defer this application, not about the application itself. At the end of the day, we have an application before us, we have a clear guidance from our officers on that application. I would suggest that if members are not happy with that application, then we look to refuse it rather than trying to defer it. I'm content with what we've got here, I don't think a deferral is going to change the advice that we've got and therefore I would support simply making a decision at this meeting here tonight, thank you.
Thank you, would any other member like to speak to councillor Holder's proposal? In that case, I would ask all those in favour of councillor Holder's proposal to defer the application, would you please indicate?
That's two.
And those against?
That would be eleven.
Thank you, thank you, so we can now continue with the discussion. So councillor Bolton, I think you wish to speak.
Thank you chairman, it's a point of clarification, I don't understand what the A O N B, Surrey Hills A O N B is actually saying. On page fourteen, there's a comment that they're withdrawing the objection and on page fifteen, the statement says the application should be refused on A O N B grounds because it raises A O N B concerns. What are A O N B, A O N B actually saying?
Good question, thank you councillor Bolton, I think Peter would like to answer that.
Yes, thank you chairman, just to confirm, if we actually start on page thirteen, the bottom of that, that's the Natural England's comments, Natural England's comments is statutory consultancy on the A O N B and their specific comments on Surrey Hills A O N B, apologies if it's confusing the way it's presented, but that's their comments on the Surrey Hills A O N B. And then if we go to page fifteen, as you quite rightly point out, that's the local Surrey Hills A O N B advisor and they obviously comment on, from a local point of view alongside the national view from Natural England. Thank you chairman.
Is it the case that the Surrey Hills A O N B are saying it should be refused? That was a comment from the councillor, the officer was it?
That's correct, yes, so their recommendation is there and it's been considered in the recommendation before you.
Thank you, councillor James.
Thank you, I'm also a Whitley councillor. Modern day farming requires different buildings, the access is necessary for modern day farming. When the original ones, it was probably a horse and cart or a hay cart, you have to have good access and the other two points, we all know, are dangerous corners. I just think that, again, I said it once before at a meeting, I think we're very lucky that we've got people who are living in this area who want to retain farming, enhance farming. Otherwise, it could have been, the actual main building could have been turned into flats and the green land just left to set aside probably with EU subsidy, not for long. I have got no problem with it and I think perhaps I should have declared an interest, I eat meat, therefore, you know, modern day farming needs these kind of buildings, old fashioned cattle courts just don't exist and they're, well actually, the original farm buildings are already there, they're up on the top of the hills where everybody could have seen them. These, the applicant is trying to, you know, put these in between the Hazelmeir Road, the tree belt and the only, one of the people who's going to see this is the person living at Rockwood themselves and if they don't mind looking at it, I've got no problem and I'm really glad that we've got people who want to keep farming in our area, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Reynolds.
Thank you chairman, well I think I echo councillor James's comments almost entirely, I also eat meat, I have to say. My family's had a house in France for the last 50 years within about 200 metres of this type of farm, albeit a slightly smaller version of it and we have had no issues or problems at all. According to the report, there have been farms in this vicinity in the past, cattle has been there and is there at the moment. Whether the issue is over these buildings, as councillor James says, if we're going to reintroduce this sort of farming in this area, then the buildings are necessary for the care of the livestock and all of that sort of thing. I too am glad that they're going to reintroduce sort of farming in this area because for too long, you know, bits of Surrey have been derided as commuter stock, broker belt, but actually, the bit we live in is great, it's a very rural part of the community and I think this takes it back to its original roots, which is something that I would appreciate. So I have to say, I really can't see anything to object about in this application. I take on board the access, the traffic thing, but actually, if we've got some slow-moving large vehicles on the road, it'll slow down all the traffic and will probably make it a little bit safer, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Peter Martin.
Thank you, I do understand that this is a fairly substantial application and I do understand the sensitivity of green belt and A O N B and we all are very lucky to live in such a beautiful area. But the fact of the matter is, that's what is it, 70, 80% of Surrey is green belt. I mean, A O N B status is not something which preserves the countryside with no activity going on it, it's not a sort of museum piece. The countryside has to live and thrive and farming has always been a part of the countryside and this is a farming application. I'm not versed in agricultural methodologies and ways of doing things, but I have to say, therefore I have to rely on the advice of our planning department and those that they consult, agricultural consultants and so forth. So in principle, I'm very happy with this, I think it's the right thing to be doing, the countryside does need to play its way even if it is A O N B and a great effort has been made to position this so that it has a minimum intrusion into the A O N B and is in part sunken into the ground. So I think considerable efforts have been made to make it as presentable and acceptable as possible and I'm glad to see that the cows will be out in the summer and that's great. And I think in terms of the access, again, I have to take the expert view, the county council highways have looked at this and said it's okay. Certainly, I know the road quite well and if you had to put an access of this sort, that doesn't seem to me to be a bad place to put it. So I have to say, I'll listen with interest to what others have to say, but my inclination right now is to support the proposal and agree with the officer's recommendation, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tom Martin.
Thank you. Members, at the end of the day, this is a farm, this is farmland and I would suggest that green belt is considerably better placed to house farming than urban or brownfield. I would suggest that the chosen location for these cow sheds on the site is about as good as it could possibly be. This has reasonable, even very sensible access to the road network, it's not down narrow tracks, it's straight on to a reasonably main road, it's got, it seems to have reasonable sightlines. The buildings themselves are well screened and sunken and we see a lot of applications and I'm not sure, we talk about, we talk about access, we talk about visibility, we talk about impact and actually, I don't think we could, we could see a better application than this. It sort of seems to tick so many of the boxes. Not only that, but this is maintaining the use of the land, this is maintaining the land as green fields predominantly and I really cannot see a fault with this and I would be happy to support the officer's recommendations.
Thank you, councillor Lee and then councillor Upton.
Thank you chairman, once again, I valued very much the site visit that in this case took place on Monday. It helped to put a lot of things into context. Certainly the contours of the land, we were able to see and feel and it was very clear that the erection of these sort of buildings were going to be suitably sighted and to minimise visual impact. Also, looking at the plans, I thought, good gracious, this is a huge setup, but in comparison to the overall site, it's relatively small. Now, we know the county highway objected to sort of the north and the south access points and so therefore suggested, and it was taken up by the applicant, that the access on to the Hazelmeir Road would be really where we saw it and we actually saw the gap in the fencing. And when I looked from left to right, although it might not be a Roman road, meaning absolutely straight, it was really quite a straight road and so therefore, the only dangers I can see is due to drivers. And I think many of our accidents come about because drivers are not taking proper responsibility and doing what they should do. Now, it's also obvious from, you know, the efforts that have been put in so far and what is happening at Rockwood Hall, these are not Mickey Mouse operations at all and the farming operation here, I am absolutely certain, because you don't invest all this money to sort of fritter it away or take serious risks, the farming here will be done to the highest standard rather like we see on country file. And those people are serious about farming and they make a good living out of it. Therefore, at the moment, I see no problems with this particular application whatsoever. Yes, there are some concerns about A O N B, but you can't necessarily expect A O N B to stay just as it is, year in, year out and as I say, the impact has been minimised very well. Thank you chairman.
Thank you councillor Lee, councillor Upton.
Thank you chair, mine is just a general comment now, I haven't listened to what the other members have said, I thank the farming community for allowing us to keep our A O N B, the countrywide, thanks to the farms, we can enjoy the countryside and see what they are doing to maintain it and I can see no reason why this proposal not only extends it, but it makes use of land that could have been used other ways. Thank you chair.
Thank you, councillor Whitley.
Thank you mister chairman, could we go back please to that photograph with the A B C D, the coloureds? Yes, thank you mister chairman, particularly as you see with A, you have a very definite rise and we were informed on the site visit that that mound was artificial from some previous barrow, umpteen, I don't know, centuries whenever ago and the idea is to level that barrow and use the earth for a bunt elsewhere to form further screening. So I really think we have to admit that the applicant is doing their absolute utmost to protect the environment, so I will be going with the officers.
Thank you, councillor Tom Martin.
Thank you for letting me come back, I just thought it was worth noting that through personal experience, living directly opposite a fruit farm has considerably greater impact on the surrounding countryside and I know from very personal experience than the use of a cattle farm. Most of these fields are going to be left exactly as they are, rather than having polytunnels and fruit canes and all sorts put up against it. So I mean, I think, you know, this is probably as, you know, it could be a pig farm, which would be equally quite intrusive to landscape and I would think, again, this is probably as minimally intrusive as a farm could be and I would maintain my support for the recommendations.
Thank you, yes, I have to agree, following the site meeting, especially, I agree with you councillor Whitley, the fact that that whole piece of land is being dug in and reduced in level is certainly going to tuck the thing away and I'm sure there must have been easier sites and less expensive sites to develop and I think that they are doing us a favour by burying it as such. Councillor Byam?
Yes, thank you, well I was very impressed with the landscape there, going on to that field, I hadn't ever had the chance to actually look at that landscape and we see it on the pictures in front of us, wonderful, wonderful scene and my first impression was, or rather my first thought was, I hope we're not going to scar this too much. Is it going to look awful? But we've been reassured by the way that they're cutting into the landscape to lower the level of the buildings and to make them less visible, et cetera, obviously it's exemplary, it's more work, but I'm clearly what's been said, they're going to reuse the materials elsewhere on the farm to create buns or whatever. The only other comment I have, which is slightly negative, was I was surprised to see that the tree line along the western boundary where the new access point had already been cleared and it seemed a bit presumptuous in a way, I thought, to have cleared it ready for the road to be cut in before any decision be made by this committee. But other than that, I'm supportive of the whole idea, the whole area, it's good to see money being spent in our countryside and for all the right reasons, for a farming point of view and an animal husbandry point of view, so I'm supportive.
Thank you, members, any last questions before we move to the recommendation? In that case, so the recommendation is that subject to conditions one to sixteen and informatives one to nine set out on pages forty-three to fifty-one of the report permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven?
And those against?
None.
Abstentions?
Two.
Thank you members, the recommendation to grant is agreed and moving on to item, I don't know, did the public gallery want to clear before we move on? Okay members, item B1, erection of five dwellings, change of use of ground floor of existing building from public house to flexible office use and change of use of first floor of existing building from public house to independent residential unit, together with alterations landscaping and associated works following demolition of an extension and detached outbuildings at the White Lion Public House Portsmouth Road, Milford, G U eight five B B. Jennifer, would you like to introduce the application to the committee please?
Thank you chairman, the site is located to the east of Portsmouth Road and comprises a pub, which is here, which is currently closed and its associated parking and garden space. There are residential dwellings to the north, east and west of the site and there is an industrial commercial depot to the south. There's some photographs here, this is the existing White Lion pub and these are the houses to the north. This is one of the extensions that would be demolished under this scheme. This is the rear of the public house, this would also be demolished, this area here and this is the side extension to be demolished and also this external staircase would be removed. This is the site boundary looking towards the commercial industrial depot to the south and this is looking from that southern side of the site towards the north, there were some houses over here and then the eastern boundary runs along here with more houses over there. So this application seeks permission for the conversion of the existing public house building here to office at the ground floor level and a residential unit at first floor. It's acknowledged there is an existing residential flat at the first floor level, but because this is ancillary to the public house, it's considered to fall within that public house use and therefore they are seeking permission to convert it to independent residential use. The application additionally seeks permission for the erection of five dwellings with a mix of four three-bed units and one two-bed unit here at the front of the site. All dwellings would have a private immunity area and bin and cycle storage, which is shown by these little grey areas here. The proposal would also include a tall hedge along the southern boundary, it says there it's three and a half metres. It says there it's three and a half metres to screen against the depot to the south, and there's a total of twenty parking spaces. So this plan just shows the site in context with the surrounding buildings. The separation distances from these buildings here are nineteen and twenty-one metres, which officers consider to be acceptable, and the side-facing windows in these rear foreplots, they would be obscure glazed, and that has been proposed as a condition if permission were to be granted. The red blobs here are the demolition, just showing where the demolition would occur, and then the access would go over that point. So this is just the proposed street scene to show how it would sit. So it's the existing public house, which is a grade-two listed building, the proposed dwelling, and then the existing buildings to the side of it. These are the proposed elevations for the public house, with an external staircase, if you see here, which is going to replace the existing one, and that serves the first floor independent residential unit. These are the proposed ground floor for office use and first floor for the residential use with the access here. These are the proposed elevations for units one to four. They're quite a simple style, which the council's historic buildings officer considered to be appropriate, so they don't detract from the listed building at the front of the site. And these are the proposed ground floor floor plans, so they mirror each other. So this is units two and four, and units one and three, and then the first floor, the same, two and four, and units one and three. And this is just the second floor plans. Apologies for that typo. These are the proposed elevations for unit five. And these are the proposed floor plans for that unit. So turning to the determining issues, with regard to the matters of principle and technical opinion, the principal development is that the site is located within the green belt, but within the rural settlement, so limited infilling within villages and the partial redevelopment of previously developed land is considered appropriate development under paragraph eighty-nine of the MPPF. With regard to the loss of the existing use, the council's external consultant has confirmed that the community is served by a large number of alternative public house establishments, and therefore, competition within the area is high. The public house is located on a highway with limited passing trade due to the alternative access routes to Milford, and therefore, in this location, the public house is considered not to be a viable business, and there's not sufficient public demand for the pub. Officers are also satisfied the public house has been sufficiently marketed at an appropriate price. The development with regard to the need for the office use, the development would be located in a suitable position, with convenient access by public transport and for local residents. The council's employment land review also identifies a likely shortfall in B1A office use, and this proposal would provide a small contribution to meet that need and that shortfall. The housing mix and the density is considered to be appropriate and acceptable, and the council's historic buildings officer has been consulted and is satisfied the proposal would not cause harm to listed building or its setting. With regard to highways, the county highway authority have raised no objection, and officers are satisfied the proposal would not prejudice highway safety. And with regard to the technical housing standards, as shown on page eighty-three of the agenda, the proposed development would meet the need, the housing standards, in terms of both bedroom size and the total floor area. Turning to the matters of judgment, identified it's within the green belt earlier, it is within the rural settlement as well. With regard to the impact on the visual immunity and the rural settlement, officers consider the proposed scheme is well-designed to fit with the surrounding area in terms of character, scale and location. The proposed design of new housing is simplistic but attractive, which is considered to be appropriate and would blend within the existing character of buildings within the settlement. With regard to the impact on the residential immunity, trees and the provision of immunity space and parking, officers consider these matters to be acceptable. As such, officers recommend that permission be granted, subject to the conditions and informatives set out on pages eighty-nine to ninety-seven of the agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Jennifer. Before I open it up to the members, just a point of clarification, was there a listed building consent that ran alongside this for the demolition?
Sorry, yes. The pub was actually listed midway through this application process, so we now have a listed building consent application, which is in the process of running. Until that, if you were to grant permission tonight, until that listed building consent was granted, they wouldn't be able to go ahead and do any works to the listed building itself. But that's still early stages in the representation period. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Jennifer. Councillor Tom Martin?
Thank you. I absolutely acknowledge that the loss of the pub is reasonable, if a little bit regrettable. Much it is a shame to lose this hostelry. I agree that its location really doesn't lend itself to a successful business in the modern day. However, I do note with some joy and satisfaction that we actually have an application putting employment space into our area, rather than simply making the entire site residential. And that really is quite remarkable, given the recent trends that we have had. So on that basis, we're maintaining some employment space there for a business, we've got some extra housing. I'm entirely comfortable with this application and will support the officers' recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Reynolds?
Thank you. I too rather regret the loss of the pub, but to be fair, it hasn't been a terribly viable one for several years now. And the last straw was when they kicked out the ladies-in-a-wheel from going there at lunchtime, and that sealed their...
And rotary.
And rotary, I think that sealed the end of their days, because that was probably about half of God, and they refused to go there after they were told by in-a-wheel not to visit the hostelery. I think this is actually a very good application. It's an improvement on the previous one, which had nine dwellings. I know the design is said to be simplistic, but actually, it's quite nice, it's quite neat, it's quite tidy, it's not fussy, I think it blends in quite well. I'm glad the pub's been kept as the building, because it's a pretty building. Welcome, like Tom, the inclusion of some office space, because it is something that is needed in Waverley. So I think all in all, I think the amenity space for all the houses is pretty decent, it's in a reasonably sustainable location, so, yeah, like Tom, I have no reason not to approve this application.
Thank you. Councillor James?
Thank you, Chairman. I fully support this application, and perhaps the officers could get other architects to follow the simplistic, because I think it's about the first time I've looked at the agenda and thought, oh, don't they look nice? I mean, look at that. If we could have had that in some of these ones that we refused unanimously, forty-six houses the other day in Farnham, you know, we might look upon, think, isn't it nice? It enhances the area, and I think when you've... And as it's in the green belt, we've had the second one in the green belt, you know, we had, there's an industrial site right next door. It's in the green belt. You've got to have things in the green belt. I think that is really good, and the architect deserves a pat on the shoulder, and thank you, officers, for bringing something that I fully support to the committee. Thank you.
Councillor Peter Martin?
Well, thank you. And isn't it a shame that this pub has not to benefit from the Chancellor's largesse today, where we're giving a thousand pounds a year, as if... I wonder how many public houses will we save by giving them a thousand pounds a year? Anyway, and of course, I don't blame the... Sorry? Well, yes, sorry. With the quality of wine that I drink, Mr. Chairman, about a week, actually, if only. And of course, I don't blame them for getting rid of these raucous in-a-wheel and rotary members. If you've ever been anywhere near their meetings, they had the... I mean, they threw me out at one stage. I mean, the rotary. Maybe I was a little too raucous. Anyway, sorry, to be more serious. I suppose I should drink, I should declare an interest, I did drink and eat in this place in the past, but maybe, I mean, many of us perhaps did. Anyway, sorry, to be more serious. I always regret the loss of commercial space, even if it's a pastoral loss as it is in this place. And in many ways, I wish that the plan that we've just submitted really clearly retained every square inch of commercial space in Waverley, as commercial space, I think it's very dangerous. However, that's a different story. And this is a good quality development in a location where commercial space, I have to say, is going to be questionable in terms of viability, particularly for a public house. So much though I mourn the loss of the pub and the loss of some of the commercial space, I think this is a pretty good development, and I'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I just clarify with officers, the parking? I think the presentation stated there were twenty-two parking places, but four of those are for the office on the ground, or the office building on the ground floor. So that only leaves eighteen for the residence. Is that, does that meet Waverley's parking criteria, given the mix of dwellings? Can I just clarify with officers, then, Councillor?
There are five spaces for the offices. Sorry if my report, I can't see that. There's five spaces, four here and one at the front here, and then there are fifteen spaces for the residential unit. And I did check, we have checked throughout the application process, that is sufficient for the residential use to meet the parking guidelines.
Three per unit, if my maths is correct, isn't it? Yeah. Jolly good. Councillor Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I cannot but agree with really all my fellow councillors. And so therefore, you don't need me to comment on those very things that they have commented on. Now, it's always good to get support, isn't it? If I can just refer you to page eighty-three, and we have at the bottom the table, which Jennifer has certainly put in, showing the compliance with, but actually, the betterment of the technical standard requirements for each of those houses, the particular bedrooms. Now, I am absolutely delighted at that, and I commend the particular architects who've put this together. Because I don't just think those figures are about minimum standards, they're about, you know, sorry, they're the actual... I'm trying to say, is that those standards, like the eleven point five and the seven point five, when they're superseded by nineteen point seven and nine point two, they've gone well above what the minimum standards are asking for. And of course, those minimum standards have been put together by a group of experts who've looked at bedrooms, the fact that there's wardrobes in there, you need circulation space, you need dressing tables and so on. So we should always try, and I think the officers are trying these days, to ensure that room sizes are at least as or better than, because it would be wrong, in my view, to have a so-called four-bedroom property. You've got bedrooms one and two, which are well over the top of the minimum standard, and you've then got so-called bedrooms three and four underneath those standards, because then they become box rooms, in my view. And the other thing is that our parking spaces do meet the standards, two point four metres by four point eight metres. They, of course, were set some time ago. And I am, I remember that a couple of meetings ago, councillor Martin the younger talked to us about the future, and indeed, we have to be careful about the future. And two point four metres, if, for example, we take the range of Jaguars, and there is absolutely nothing to say there couldn't be Jaguar there, five of those models are in excess of two point four metres. So I'm just sort of lobbing that in, that, you know, things are growing all the time, and I think our standards should sort of be modified to grow likewise. And the only other observation for me to make is that end-on parking, I'm never happy about, because I think that easily leads to people sort of parking in the road. Anyway, I am still fully behind this particular application. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lee. Councillor Holder, then, councillor Wheatley?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to echo councillor Peter Martin's comments, that it's unfortunate that he didn't listen to the Chancellor's speech today, whether he might have stayed, he changed his mind and kept it as a pub. Of course, there now are no pubs in Milford, so I would advise all the people in Milford to come and drink in Whitelands.
Thank you. Councillor Wheatley? You're not going to talk about where you drank, are you?
No, no, Mr. Chairman. When I'm in pubs, I'm selling Golos. I have to say, I actually like this application. I knew my fellow colleagues would be delighted about the commercial space, and I echo that. But I personally am delighted that they're stripping the extraneous bits off the pub and returning it to its former glory. I think that it looks extremely attractive, and of course, we do need the extra homes, so I am all in favour of this development.
Jolly good. Councillor Byham?
Well, having heard all the talk about all the raucous behaviour in this pub, et cetera, I thought I better add my thoughts on it. I've only been there once, I was after a running group, I guess it was quite a few years ago, because I haven't run for a couple of years now. We ended up there, they hadn't got any beer, or at least only bottled beer, it was a grotty little back room we were directed into, and I vowed never to go back there again, so I'm glad to see that it's disappearing. But I do agree, wholeheartedly, it looks an extremely interesting and commendable application, and I'd look forward to going ahead.
Couldn't agree more. I think, not about the pub, I never drank there, but, and there is still the refectory in Milford, Nick, if you're worried about that. But no, I think it's a delightful scheme, and to preserve the old building and make good use of it, and then put around it by plain but good houses, I think is jolly good. So, members, any last questions before we move to the recommendation? Jolly good. So the recommendation is that subject to conditions one to sixteen and informatives one to nine on pages forty-three to fifty-one of the report, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
That's unanimous.
Jolly good. Thank you. Thank you, members. The recommendation to grant is agreed, and I will now hand over to councillor Byham. Thank you very much.
Could I just say, the listed building consent, would that be delegated now? Does... Thank you. It's pointless bringing it back.
Can I raise a point of order at this point, please?
Certainly.
Given the reasons for this next item coming to committee, if members agreed, I'd be entirely comfortable to go straight to a vote, because I'm comfortable with it.
Are you trying to spoil my evening every time I take over the chair? I've got nothing to say. You obviously don't like what I say. Councillor Holder?
I think we make a mistake, that every time that David Els is involved in a planning application, we automatically agree it. It's never debated. I think that's a mistake. I think we should debate these things and not automatically sign them off.
Can we please have a vote on whether we ought to debate this fairly minimal item, I have to agree, but nevertheless, I do recognise, and councillor Holder's concerned, it applies to all of us, if we're putting applications in, and indeed, all of our officers who have a, who work for the council, who've, any application they put in, however minor, has to come to a committee to be considered. But you've all had a chance to read the report, could I please have a show of hands of those who wish it to be, you're accepted from the report, that you're happy that it should be agreed? Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much. So that concludes the meeting. Thank you very much, so that concludes the meeting.
Thank you.
Right.